We'll start out with the Fledge of Legion, please. Next will do approval of the council minutes from February twenty six, oh, not roll call.
Osborne?
Here.
Euler?
Here.
Bentley, not present. Jones?
Here.
Kushner?
Here. Now will be approval of the city council minutes from February twenty six to twenty four.
Move to approve.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes. Adoption and agenda.
Move to approve adoption as presented.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes. Okay, next we have a couple of proclamations. The first one, I'm going to invite anybody who wants to come up and stand. This is for Women's History Month.
Come on.
Yeah. Okay. Women's History Month proclamation, whereas International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland in nineteen eleven, and whereas International Women's Day is observed worldwide on March eighth, providing an opportunity to recognize and reflect on the progress made to advance women's equality, to celebrate the gains made by women in our society, and reflect on the challenges, barriers which women continue to face. And whereas each year, the President of the United States encourages all citizens to observe March as National Women's History Month, and the National Women's History Alliance has designated the theme for two thousand and twenty-four as Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And whereas we honor local women from the past and present, but taking the lead to show the importance of change and establish firmer safeguards, practices, and legislation reflecting these values. And whereas we recognize women from diverse backgrounds have been long, have long been at the forefront of efforts to address systemic inequities and promote a more inclusive and just society. And whereas we encourage our community and organizations to celebrate the achievements of women who have championed equality, diversity, and inclusion, and we reaffirm our commitment to advancing those principles in our society. Now therefore, I Jim Kushner, Mayor, along with the City Council of the City of Warrensburg, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty fourth as Women's History Month.
Okay, let me get one for the city. There you go.
Did you want that?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Somebody can get a comeback. Next we have developmental disabilities awareness month. Wonder where y'all? Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas during developmental disabilities awareness month, we reaffirm our commitment to ensure that our great state's promise extends to all of our citizens. And whereas nearly four million Americans have grown up with several physical or mental impairments that have slowed their learning, limited their mobility, inhibited their expression, and rendered them dependent on others for care and assistance. For many of these people with developmental disabilities, there is now the prospect of a brighter future and greater opportunity. Whereas new opportunities have been created through the efforts of those and with developmental disability, I have a hard time with that word. And their family members, along with the professionals and officials at all levels of government. Working together, they have brought about significant changes in the public perception of young people and adults with developmental disabilities, opening new doors to independent and productive lives. And whereas on February twenty eighth nineteen eighty seven, President Ronald Reagan officially declared proclamation five, six, one, three, making March National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. He urged Americans to increase public awareness of the needs of the potential of Americans with disabilities and whereas it is intended to urge those in our community to seek opportunities to embrace the richness of America's diversity by considering the talents and efforts of all members of the community with different abilities. Now therefore, I Jim Kushner, along with the City Council of the City of Warrensburg, do hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand and twenty-four as developmental disabilities awareness month. Sorry about that.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. More tough words tonight. First and second readings of ordinance is to follow. Six point one, an ordinance accepting sanitary sewer main extension at Third Street and West Gay Street for maintenance by the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, Mr. McCarty.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The property owner of the lots over there on Third and Gay Street has started developing and built a couple of duplexes. And to facilitate that, they put a sewer main extension in from about the center of the property towards Gay Street. All tests and inspections were done and everything passed. So we're asking you to approve the accepting for the main for maintenance.
Okay.
It's just a standard formality of that way we take it. Doesn't become a private line in the future.
Okay.
Any questions?
Need a motion, please?
Let's move to second reading by title only.
Listen to you go, you got it.
Osborne?
Yes.
Sorry, Osborne. Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting the sanitary sewer main extension at Third Street and West Gay Street for maintenance by the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, six point two, first and second reading, an ordinance establishing traffic control devices on the Cooper Boulevard Extension, Thompson Drive, and Hawthorne Boulevard in the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, Mr. Vega.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So with the closeout of the Cooper Boulevard Extension project, necessitated an ordinance to establish the traffic control devices that were installed as part of the project to be made permanent. And so such examples were reduction in speed limits along Thompson Drive from thirty-five to twenty-five. That would make the speed limit within that area uniformly consistent. So along Hawthorne Boulevard as you make the rounds to the roundabout to then go south on Thompson, it used to be twenty-five, thirty-five, and then to twenty-five. So now it's twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. Also with that signage was installed because of crosswalks. So crosswalks were installed on Cooper and Thompson. With that addition of the sidewalk that would go to Walmart, and also crosswalks that were installed along Hawthorne to connect into the trail for connectivity purposes. So that's the gist of this ordinance, and I will stand for any questions if you may have.
Motion, please?
So Thompson goes, it goes all the way through. And so there's one on each, each end of Thompson, there's stop sign or crosswalk or?
So the stop sign and crosswalk is at Thompson and Cooper.
Which, so?
It's from the, Thompson is the roundabout to Cooper.
Right, I'm looking at it. Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Need a motion, please?
Motion move to second reading by title only.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing traffic control devices on the Cooper Boulevard Extension, Thompson Drive, and Hawthorne Boulevard in the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is number seven, mayoral appointments. I have one this time. Appoint Tommy McKinney as a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee to fill an expiring term through October of twenty-four. And she is here to listen to her. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
She's here if you wanted to.
Yes, if you want me to come up right now.
No, you can stand up or sit right there. It's up to these guys to say yes.
Relax.
Need a motion?
Move to approve mayoral appointment.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. No.
There's nothing on, the appearance is not listed. Mislandish matters from the mayor or council? You guys are hard added on the crack felon. Sure that will help a lot in the future. Nope, nope, okay. City staff updates, starting with, who gets to start tonight? Danielle?
I'm gonna start with Courtney.
Hi.
Finance. This one's easy. This is your February finance report. Does anyone have any questions? That's really, we had a orderly analysis last month, and so that's a very deep dive. And looking at it, nothing major will be changed.
Okay, how's the audit coming?
I actually sent him an email today and said, uh, hi, basically asking whether he'd be ready for presentation at your first council meeting in April. He's supposed to be done by three twenty-nine. That was the contract. He has not asked for any more time, but we do have a report that's due to the rating agencies and our borrowers on three twenty-eight of March. So I have asked him to communicate with me, so hopefully I'll hear from him tomorrow.
Okay, they've usually been good in the past.
And then I'll make sure I let Danielle know so that she can let you guys know when we have any.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Excellent.
In the packet is a copy of our quarterly report for this last month, so let me know if you have any questions on that. I've also put at your spot invitation to Jane Haven Retirement Reception that will be here in this building on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, from one thirty to three thirty. So we hope you can attend. And then also, we did last week issue the GIS request for proposals for GIS services, so that will be due at the very beginning of May. And we will be considering that, hoping, hopefully bringing something back to you all, probably in the July timeframe would be my guess. We have had a lot of interest in it, so that's encouraging.
That's good.
Explain to me again what GIS is, please?
It's our online, it's a mapping system, electronic map.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Mark Mr. James up next.
Our February activity reports in the package, if you had any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer. The format's changed a little bit with our new recording software, so it looks a little different than it has in the years, months past. Our thermal imaging cameras we were, we purchased through the Firehouse Sub Foundation grant have been received, so we're working on some training in those fields. So that was a good addition to our equipment. On the training end of things, we got some good news here the last couple of weeks. As I mentioned before, there's contract training that's made available through the State of Missouri, Department of Public, Division of Fire Safety. We were able to secure three of those trainings this year already, so those will be three, 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 three trainings that come this year. Based on monitoring, structural class rescue, large area search. We had budgeted to host rope technician awareness operations and technician level training this year, which are three different layer, levels.
And you said rope?
Rope for technical rescue, like high wall buildings or.
Going down holes.
Okay.
So we budgeted fourteen thousand to, to bring those trainings to our staff this year. We were able to secure all three of those levels of training through the state on that, on that contract for free. So that was a huge win there for us. And then they had a little bit of money left over that they were trying to spend, so we put it in for an additional three classes. So training division's been working pretty well, a lot of that, that contract training in the last couple of years. It's a lot easier for us to get a lot of staff when it's here, a lot more affordable that way, so they've been working hard on that.
That was gonna be my question. So they're coming here to you and doing the training?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, they'll be here, our staff will go in. Typically, class sizes that can accommodate other fire department members from around the local area, as far as the east side state come over. So it's provided training to everybody across the state and showcases.
Rope rescues.
It fill up very quick.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wanted, you reported on the Narcam, issuing the Narcam. Is it in like these buildings and in the city buildings and all the schools and?
So.
All the resident halls, I just?
We don't have it just, the only distribution throughout our city facilities is PD carries it and we carry it in our, our jump bags on the fire trucks. We don't have it at the front desk. It's something that we can definitely explore. Our agreement with the school district kind of left it up to them on where they were putting it. And I believe they put it at the high school, middle school, and the Reese Learning Center, were the three schools that they had added in. And then we have all the documentation, everything we need for the university. So we'll be getting their supplies to them here in the next couple of weeks. And then it's kind of the same setup as they establish what they want their program to look like and then put it where they want throughout campus.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations on the response time, too. It looks really good.
Yeah, we had a really, really good month.
Yes.
It looks good, so. Average, we're still around that for thirty, four minutes and thirty for our yearly average, but just last month.
Two minutes, two minutes and forty-two seconds? That's impressive.
Everything was real close to the station, we were just real lucky.
May I ask what overlapping calls mean?
Absolutely. So overlapping calls are when there's two or more calls occurring at the same time.
Okay.
So we look at that number a lot and kind of, it impacts a lot of response times, one of them, but then just our service distribution. So we have seen that upward trend over the last several years, the three, last three years in particular, where more calls are occurring at the same time. So for us, when we have just two on-duty crews, when we have two calls going on, we're out of resources when that third call comes out.
Gotcha.
So it's a number that we like to, to keep a track, keep track of and, and see where we're at. So and with our new reporting software, we're able to drill down a bit, a little bit deeper on when those two calls are going on, is the third call coming out, or a fourth call, a fifth call? Are we relying on recalling staff? Do we call the fire history for help, that kind of stuff, so we can get a little better picture of where our resources are?
Gotcha, thank you.
So if you have two calls at the same time, you're using your two groups, do you then kind of warn the, the third group that you may need them when, when your, both groups are already out?
It's very situational depending on what the calls are that they're on. So if there's something that we don't expect to be on a long time,
Okay.
we kind of err on the side of, we'll figure it out if it happens.
Okay.
It's not the most solid plan, but it, it works.
Right.
Of course, for now. But yeah, the battalion chief in particular, when, when two calls are out, they're, they're definitely kind of figuring out where they need to move people around.
You might also tell them that, you know, the availability of upper staff. They could go to the calls and evaluate what you need, right? Still?
Yeah. As far as like.
New oil, any, any training staff?
Yeah, sometimes we get to enjoy the sunshine, so yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll run around or get, you know, the fire marshal, the training officer, myself, and the deputy chief. You know, we can kind of prioritize where we need those resources, or if it's a medical call, at least one of us can get there and start running aid. So we may not get the whole group right away, but we do our best to do as much as we can, we'll get.
Of house fires, apartment fires, those kinds of fires? It used to be cigarette smoking, I think was like one of the number one causes. What is the number one cause? Is kitchen fires more so than?
Yes, cooking fires nationally lead, and then last year that was our leading cause of fires. We do still see improperly disposed of smoke materials as a likely cause, and then a few fires a year at least. A lot of times, we get narrowed down to, we can't eliminate that as a cause. Like, we're able to, hey, there's cigarette butts here, here's where the fire started. But at least one or two times a year, we can get pretty close to figuring out that's probably the start.
Okay. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Just updating you on officers and where we've been last week with Officer, the Officer of Independence. Having his life taken from him. We, we had six officers go and volunteer to run security on the house over in Gainesville area. They're still in Johnson County, but they, they put out a request for all surrounding agencies. See if we'd assist, and we did that. And then we had officers, we had seven officers go up for the funeral last Friday to represent one for keep our old SRO officer, Chris Cole, in your hearts, because he was on scene during that. Hit pretty hard on to him, the Independence Officer. With that, we have five in training still. They have three more weeks. And one of them will have to extend because he's in the military, he has to leave for military during part of that training. But four of them should be getting out here in three weeks, nobody want to.
And then you'll be fully staffed or you'll be?
Patrol will be fully staffed, but we'll still be down four.
Down four.
Two SROs and two investigative spots. And then we have one detective that is retiring in December, and then we have him sort of asleep in here next month, so we'll be back down six, so.
Okay, and you'll fill those by in-house as much as possible?
So what we're planning on doing is seeing how our new officers come and how they're doing. And we'll start backfilling detectives and possibly SRO positions.
Those are, SROs are the?
School resource.
Thank, okay.
So if we can backfill the school resource officers and the detectives, that will free up our positions on patrol. Those four positions, but with the one detective that's retiring, we're gonna have to start looking to get one in there and get that person trained up as well.
Okay.
That's the plan. And we have two, we have, we do have two that are interested in SRO positions, school resource officer position. So they'll be interviewing for them for the start of next year. We're not gonna be having them in schools this year yet, but so we're gonna interview and interview the school district, make sure they're good, and then move to start putting them in schools beginning next year. That gives us our five new officers, six months' time on the streets and make it start a little more comfortable. Mary, you had a question?
Officer Townsend?
Yes.
An interaction with him the other day, very good, very professional.
Did you get pulled over?
Nine-one-one, no, I did not get pulled over.
Did you have to assume the position?
But he was concerned because the dog, the dog, or my daughter's dog was there going to shut up. But anyway, we had a nine-one-one hangup call there, they, he did, and dispatch plodded it at my house. But the phone traced to a place in southern Port Raines, Indiana. Screwed a deal, but he was good, he was professional.
Yeah, Officer Townsend, he's a good officer. I think he's been here approximately three, maybe going on four years now.
He looked at me and goes, I think I know who you are.
He should, he watches every council meeting with it all. Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
And you?
First of all, anyone else want to do another question? I have a few things this evening just to update you all on. First thing, just a little bit of fun. Our Midwest Public Rent, who is our insurance, health insurance provider for us, they are hosting a walking challenge, and so we have several teams who are participating in that. We are competing against other teams who are also in the pool. So all the way from Grayne Valley to smaller, smaller cities in Kansas. So we are competing. I'm happy to report that my team is in fourth place today, last time I checked. So, no, we finally got all of the firefighters and police officers, we all got their fit bits up and going, so we do anticipate our, our desk jockeys to start. But it's very exciting, just creating that camaraderie amongst all of us. And hopefully we can get better participation as we continue to be a member of NPR, but it has been fun. We start property owner meetings with property owners along McGuire Street next week. Those will go into probably up through the end of March, really starting to talk about how we will be changing driveways, impacting access, managing how folks enter and leave the roadway. So those conversations are really starting to get to the nitty-gritty, so no longer, this is possibly what we could do, this is what we are proposing. So we'll really start talking about temporary construction easements, if we are looking for any. You know, we've said that we're not widening the road away, but there might be an opportunity to try to get some permanent easements for storm drainage, stormwater detention, those sorts of things. So really starting those very serious conversations with property owners in the next couple of weeks, and we're very excited about that. An update on Renew Warrensburg, again, that is our half-cent capital sales tax renewal, a question that will be on the ballot on April second. So I hope everyone has marked their calendars, set a reminder. I believe early voting has already started. So if you are not going to be in town on April second, no excuse, you can go see Diane Thompson at the county courthouse, and you can cash your ballots now. We have met with the local fire union last week. We've met with city departments, so we met with our community development team, our Parks and Rec Department. Later this week, we are going to be meeting with everybody else. On Thursday, we'll be at the police department training room, so if you would like to join us, please do. We will be having pizza, and then also it will be pie day. We are gonna celebrate pie day, three, three, three point one four, or March fourteenth. So we're excited about that. I'm also presenting to the Main Street Board a little bit later this week. Of course, we have one more radio show with Woody, Good Morning Johnson County, will be next Sunday.
What time?
Eight, I'm on at eight-thirty.
You're eight-thirty, okay.
On Mondays, if I don't get booted. The Chamber Forum is on March twentieth, next Wednesday. That was, I believe that starts at six-thirty. And we'll be in the American Legion. We will have an opportunity to share information about our question at that time. We have been putting out Facebook posts and some social media posts, just really sharing information about how these funds will be used and how these funds will be used to support purchasing fire trucks, but really trying to explain why it's important for us to replace fire trucks, why it's important for us to invest in our roads, why it's important for us to replace patrol vehicles. And so we're continuing to try to get the word out about why it's important, as well as making, making sure everyone is reminded that April second is the day. Does anyone have any questions about our Renew Warrensburg and our educational campaign?
I got flagged back there, so I think that starts at five-thirty maybe, that forum.
Thank you.
There's somebody back their way that might know that.
I, I thought there might be another expert in the room.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just curious, do you, how often do you hear from retail strategies, anything?
Yeah, so we uh heard from them. Uh, we've been in contact with them about a potential uh development that is coming to town. We've had some pretty um preliminary conversations, uh still pretty uh pre-conceptual about um an opportunity that's coming. Uh, we did reach out to them and we are trying to find a date. So they are going to come back to the community and do another boots on the ground visit. Um, and really trying to time that so that they'll have an opportunity to come and speak with council in person, since we haven't had an opportunity uh for them to be in person yet. But yeah, continuing to, I know that they are representing us at uh those different shows um and those different uh opportunities to try to recruit. So we are coming up on, gosh, Barb, is that in our third year? That's right when I
Should be starting our third year.
Yeah, I think we're starting our third year with them. So we'll really be able to start to see if there's been some trends and uh reaching back out to some of our developers and seeing if they've found that relationship beneficial as well. So. Um I do have some calendar, a few calendar updates. Um I put here on my ca- I wrote down April twenty-second. I can't remember why.
No counseling.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Uh, April twenty-second, we are looking at possibly uh, we don't have a whole lot um to put on the agenda at this time. So uh we might not have a city council meeting on April twenty-second. Um, wanted to give you all an update on that. Uh, April twenty-sixth is the community update meeting. So that will be at um It starts early.
Yeah, what's the community update meeting?
So the community update is hosted by the chamber. Um, and it's an opportunity for the city, the school district, the hospital, the university. Um, all of our um jurisdictions that are here. Uh, just to give an update on to, and everyone's welcome to attend by ticket, come out for breakfast. Um, and we just share uh, you know, what, what for us, you know, what are, what developments we've had, how it's been going at the city. Um
Is that like the luncheon last year at the um Legion, the chamber luncheon where everybody came up?
That's exactly what it is.
Okay. All right, but it's at Brooklyn. Okay.
So um, hope you have your calendars marked for that. Um, on May ninth and tenth, we have our governing body retreat. Uh, we have um at the Holiday Inn Express, we have reserved a room, a boardroom uh for us to, yeah. For us to uh kind of get out of uh, first of all, have enough room, a conference room where uh all of the governing body and all the department directors can, can sit around the table and, and have a very conversational um opportunity to really think about some of these higher, more strategic things that we have coming um up in the next year as we head into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget cycle. Um, we are very much looking forward to that. Um, I'm going to be sending out a, an email uh kind of telling you what that proposed agenda looks like at this time. We'll have an opportunity for us to uh talks about some particular topics if you all want to submit those. Um, if uh some of those require a little bit of research for us, or if it requires uh more research, we might have to postpone it. But really want to give us an opportunity for you all to um, things that you've been thinking about. Um, please send those our way. Um, and give you all an opportunity to sit down in a less formal setting and um talk about initiatives and direction for the city. Uh, May twenty-seventh is Memorial Day. It's also the second meeting in, uh, second Monday, fourth Monday in May.
Our second meeting.
So we will um have a meeting that will be canceled. Uh, however, we may need a special meeting. And so if you are planning on traveling over the memorial hall, Memorial Day holiday, uh, please let Jody or myself know. Uh, that way we can uh, not, not really sure, we may or we may not. Um, but uh just want to make sure we know what your all travel calendars are so that uh if we need to have that meeting, we can start planning.
So you would move it maybe the month, the week before or later in that week?
Yeah, depending on what your all's schedules look like, we could certainly do it on the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth, or we could do it on the twenty-second. Or, yeah.
Okay.
Wow, I know. That's all, that's the, the beginning of summer. It's the kickoff of summer. That's what Memorial Day always feels like for me. So I know lots of people try to go to the lake. Eddie says no.
I may go to Chilhaway. No, I just have family there.
Mark, he might be there too.
No, there's a party there. Um, yeah, I'll be in Illinois at graduation.
You, you don't have to tell us your travel plans. It's an open session. We'll uh, uh, make sure you put Mayor's uh House on Watch that weekend. No.
You know where I live.
What, what's the code to get in the front?
He knows that.
He knows everything.
Are there any other questions?
On the McGuire Street, uh, there was going to be a public uh workshop or when, when is that? Is that May or June?
It's gonna be in May. And we are, we are looking at dates. I just sent an email to Chris and Brandon over at the community center to see if we could reserve those dates. Um, and then we'll narrow it down and we'll be sure to get that out. Uh, we will have that date by this Friday. Um, or Monday at the very latest, because we are going to put that in the second issue of the Warrensburg Legend. And that is due on March fifty.
Okay.
I have to have that nailed down by month.
Remind me or us the closing for the solid waste uh bids?
That was That closes April twelfth at five again.
Okay.
We have our uh
Couple of months out yet. I have any answers?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I will know then how many vocals we receive.
That's about it.
It will probably be June before we bring anything back to town.
Yeah. Uh, we had our uh mandatory pre-bid meeting. Um, Barb, you have that list in front of you? Um, I'm gonna try to rattle them off. Let me know if I forgot. Um, G F L. So Green for Life, Republic, uh, J and S, Constable, uh Town and Country and R T S. So we have six folks who are interested in bidding our solid waste company.
And it's still open too, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
We may get a couple in a month.
One of the things I know is just
They had to come to the meeting.
They did have to.
Okay, so if they didn't come to the meeting, they're out.
At this point. Yeah, I am Yeah, we are very uh, uh, we were, I was very happy to see six people who are interested in bidding. Um, and just as a reminder, um, you know, the, we put out commercial and residential. Uh, really looking for all kinds of opportunities. So we could have one company get the commercial. We could decide not to do commercial at all. We can have another company do residential. We are not committed to moving forward with residential. So we are really leaving our options uh open and making sure that uh the, the decision that we make in June or July is going to be what council really feels is best for the city and moving forward. Um, on how we handle solid waste in our country.
One question, uh, G F L, Town and Country, J and S Republic, and who else?
Constable.
Constable.
And R T S.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And one of the things that we're requiring, are we requiring their equipment? Um, when they pick up the, the trash that is enclosed? That it's not a four-sided wagon, that they're throwing bags up on top and then they're losing them as they go down the street?
Yeah, you wanna
We are required vehicles to be five years old or newer. And they have to tell us what equipment they have. I don't believe we put a spec on each piece of equipment though.
That being said, we are also requiring carts. So your roll-off carts. Um, so that doesn't really ma- mesh with the sort of equipment that you were talking about for picking it up. Because they have to lift that entire cart over the wagon with the sideboards.
Or they just pick up the individual bags and they throw them up on the top?
Right.
That, yeah. And then will we know whether or not they're taking it to a local uh facility or a uh transfer station?
Yeah, they have to tell us where they're taking it in the proposal, in the, in their proposal.
Okay. Has anybody been between here and Sedalia and looked at the trash along the fence rows? From the, all the vehicles coming out of the city?
On D D.
On uh Fifty Highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the fence rows are just full of that light uh stuff that's coming out of those transfer trucks as they go down Fifty Highway.
You know, a part of the reason that we have to give such notice um for the, you know, we had to give two years notice. Um, and then again, we will make a decision in June or July. And then we will have another six months, six to seven months before this actually goes into effect. Um, and part of that is to allow whoever the bidder is, uh, whoever is the uh successful bidder uh to build up their equipment. Um, and to, you know, if they need to go secure alone or they need to go uh purchase new equipment to be able to provide service to us, that will allow them that that it's a long, this has been a very long process. That's, you know, really been in the works since April of twenty twenty-two. So we're, yeah, it's a long one, but necessary because it is big equipment purchases.
Right.
Well, I think that one of those trucks um that you do see with the front loader, I think those are probably two fifty, two seventy-five. Similar to what we pay for snow piles and that's what's right. Big purchase, big equipment purchases. All right. If there are no more questions for us, we will, I promised Adam I'd have him home in an hour tonight. No. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Make them best more often, Adam. All right, then after nothing else, we shall adjourn the evening. We're done. I don't hit the hammer. Hey, Chris Neil.